Mac, right?
Let's stand for what do we?
What is the play of the United States of America? And we do the one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, go please.
Mark Serber.
Here.
Frank Scott.
Here.
That was Wilsey.
Roger.
Roger Mahew.
Yep.
Danny David.
Anybody got anything about the agenda? Looks good to me. Jenny's on the Zoom watching it tonight, so.
I'm here.
Well, hi. Good luck. Tom. Uh. I'd like to, uh, like to bring up the, uh, generator at the, uh, the old jail, so. We'll just end that, get that at, at the end of discussion items. So.
G.
G. Yeah, G, yes. Okay. Any public comment on agenda items, please? And in the rooms, anybody on the phone would like to make a public comment about an agenda item? No, not too many on the phone tonight anyway, so, okay, all right, then we'll move on. Appointments have done, so discussion items. Uh, well, I guess we're waiting for the, the administrator to get back here in a minute here. Uh, he's gonna be able to explain this stuff. Well, in the meantime, let's move G to A.
Okay.
Mark and I were at the airport meeting yesterday and, uh, uh, Mike Bowers was there and we were going over the airport's emergency plan. And because the airport has to have a plan for an emergency. And one of the questions was if the power, if we lost power, could we maintain for seventy-two hours? Well, no, because we don't have a generator. So Mark and I just kind of looked at each other and said, we know where one is, so.
It's just sitting.
I, I guess, uh, I guess I'm just saying to the commissioners, uh, when, when it comes time and we have to make a decision, we got a place for it, so.
And I've, and I've mentioned it before, possibly utilizing in this building as well, I don't know what the capabilities, you know, what this building requires, but you know, my thought was at least to keep up the server room and stuff, so I mean, there's.
Don't, don't we have a generator out back?
There is no generator for this building either. No, there is not. So, I mean, I've, I've brought that up a couple of different times, is, you know, that thing's just sitting there. You know, it can be utilized someplace, whether it's here or at the airport.
Right.
You know, so.
Okay.
You know, I guess.
We had one.
No, we don't, so. Should the priority be keeping the county servers up and going? And that room cooled off, or should it be the airport?
Right.
And Ben's gonna take a look at what how many KW he'd need out there, so we can compare it to what is existing here and stuff.
Right.
That generator's been, been reliable since, you know, day one, since we got it over there.
Yeah.
Thirty years ago, so.
Okay. I was unaware we, I thought we had one there.
No, we do not.
All right.
Nor do we have smoke detectors in the building.
Good timing. Okay, well, let's, uh, give it a minute here. Then we'll back, explain that stuff to us. I think it's three minutes, it's about up.
Look at that.
Well, here he is, okay. We have already moved G to A and talked about it, now you.
You weren't even ordered G, so, okay, cool.
Yeah, go A. The draft discriminatory action grievance policy.
I can actually talk about A and B together, both of the proposed policies were brought to me from the USDA, that's the, uh, Department of Agriculture in relation to those vehicle grants that we have open right now. Um, they do every three years an audit of all of our policies and procedures. They took a look at where we were with, uh, our discriminatory, discriminatory action grievance policy and the limited English proficiency policy. And, uh, asked that we put something on the record as a county policy as sort of a condition to receive those grant dollars. Like, the discriminatory action grievance policy is just simply saying if anybody feels that they've, uh, been discriminated against in the county, we've got a standalone policy that says, here's how we're gonna handle it. Now, we do have policies like our harassment policy and a couple of others that we've adopted over the last few years that include pretty similar language to this. But they asked that we have something standalone to cover any kind of discrimination anyone might allege. Okay, that's fair enough, I mean, it's just a policy that really does duplicate a process that we already follow. On the limited English proficiency policy, now that's a little different, we talked about this a couple of months ago. This is intended just to put on paper a plan that we would have should somebody come to the county and need services, but they don't speak English. We don't necessarily have a population segment that's large enough in this county to warrant having somebody on retainer that maybe speaks Spanish, French, whatever language you might, um, come up with. But occasionally, we might have somebody come in needing services that does. Actually, we had this happen in the courts here over the last couple of months where they had somebody who had limited English proficiency and the courts had to find somebody, uh, as an interpreter and help them through the court process, they were able to do that. Uh, and what this policy says is that's exactly what we'll do, if we have somebody that comes in here and they only speak French, we will identify an interpreter who speaks French to help that person get the services that they need. You know, offices where that might be, um, where, as I think the highest likelihood of happening, although the likelihood itself is very low, I point right to the clerk's office, somebody comes in, wants a vital record, limited English proficiency, what does the clerk's office do? You'll see on the second page of this policy, uh, the I speak statements, this is a number of different languages, uh, this was provided by USDA that anybody can point to and say, this is my language, so if it's, uh, I see, well, there's French about a third of the way down, they'll see, I'm not even gonna say it, I did take French in high school, but we won't test that. But they'll say, they'll see that and they can point to this or check the box and say, this is the language I speak. Now, the clerk has an idea of what type of interpreter we need. Again, the likelihood of us having to get to this level is, is not high, I can't recall, other than that one situation here with the courts, I can't recall another time in five years where we've had this happen. So I don't think it's something that's, um, gonna be front and center anytime soon. Now, there are a number of policies that, uh, you'll see out there, various organizations that have USDA grants that literally have seventeen pages about limited, uh, English proficiency, but you'll find that those are usually in more urban communities that have larger populations of people who don't speak English as maybe a first language, definitely, I, I understand that, and then there'll be procedures for finding somebody who speaks French, Spanish, whatever it might be. Uh, probably phone numbers, contact information, maybe even interpreters on retainer. I don't believe we need to get to that level, uh, in Ogumaw County, but we do at least then by way of this policy, we would have something to turn to, to guide us in, in the moment, to, to know what we need to do. And that's really the gist of both of these policies. Um, again, this is every three-year review, so, uh, you know, three years from now, they may come through and find other things, I'm not really sure, I do recall the last time they came through, we came out of that with, um, uh, code of conduct policy that had to do with, uh, who, uh, uh, can contact vendors and, and, you know, what you can and can't do, uh, one-on-one with vendors. Uh, so they'll, they'll critique us and they may find one or two more, uh, items like this three years from now, but uh, for now, these are the two policies they asked us to look at, there were a couple of other things that we'll be doing internally, uh, such as an inventory of our, um, disabled parking and making sure that we have enough spaces, I'm assured that we do, we'll document it, we'll write that down, so the next time they stop in, they'll see that. Uh, but these are two things that they asked for the board to consider.
Comments?
I don't have any.
Okay, good, thank you.
Pretty easy, so.
Uh, moving on with, uh, uh, draft transit, a couple of different transit policies, go ahead and.
See Tony here on the.
Tony's up online.
He's a looker.
Yep.
Um, just a brief, to steal Tony's thunder, this is almost exactly what we just talked about, only with two different subjects, ADA compliance and the drug and alcohol testing. These are frankly redundant, but MDOT would like the board to adopt these as policies of the transit, not countywide transit policies, all well and good. On the drug and alcohol testing policy, this is actually mandatory for anybody in public transportation, uh, that, that we have these policies on the books, this one is especially redundant because we have almost exactly the same language in the union contract, which you adopted already, but MDOT said we need the department to have a standalone policy. Well, we kind of went through this and made sure there wasn't anything different between the two, so we don't get into, uh, any kind of a labor dispute over it. Uh, but it is just a redundant policy to one that we already have. The ADA compliant and, um, compliance and complaint and reasonable modification policy, uh, is good, they will be, uh, at transit, the only department that has one of these right now, we do have an ADA compliance policy for the county that was adopted twenty-three or twenty-four years ago, and it takes up all the space of one paragraph of this policy, which is multiple pages, so that may be an area that we'll need to work on in the future. Uh, but again, these are two policies that MDOT has asked in order for us to be compliant with, um, their mandates that they have to pass down to the county. Now, Tony, you had a third policy that, uh, you had late, I did not even get a chance to open that yet, but can you talk a little bit about that policy and what its implications are?
Yes, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, great.
Uh, well, good evening commissioners, um, so the procurement policy, um, it's, it's kind of, I guess it falls in line with the redundancy that Tim is talking about, but this is more so for, uh, transit as a departmental policy. Um, that way, we have an understanding of how the, the state works as far as grants and procurement and everything like that.
Okay, procurement, yeah. You know, will that be ready for next week?
It, it's actually ready now, as soon as I opened my email, but it didn't arrive in time to be on the agenda, so we can bring that forward next week and you'll have it and we can be compliant with MDOT as well.
Very good.
We kind of discussed that this morning in the transit, and these are time-sensitive.
Right.
Oh.
MDOTs. Either, either you do this or we're gonna withhold twenty-five percent of your funding.
Right.
Yeah, thank all me.
I'm surprised we don't have drug and alcohol, alcohol testing, uh, in policy already.
Well, as I said, we do in the union contract.
It is, but it's not a standalone transit policy, MDOT wants it to be specific, not, you know.
Even then, I thought it'd be there.
If I may elaborate a little bit more on these policies, uh, uh, the reason why, uh, everyone is seeing this right now, uh, I went through a triennial review, um, which MDOT provided a compliance officer to come down to make sure that, um, that our agency is in compliance with FTA regulations. So that's why these are being brought up, um, kind of like with the policies that Tim mentioned with the USDA, um, for it being every three years, that needs to be renewed or updated. Um, these policies you will see again in three more years, uh, for my next triennial, uh, triennial review as well.
Makes sense to me. Yes, yeah, thanks. Charlie?
Yep, sounds good, it's just done next week.
All right. Opioid settlements, agreements, you got a whole ton here.
We got three of them here, uh, these are two new settlements and a new state subdivision agreement, I'll just talk about each of them briefly. Uh, the first one is the Purdue Stackler settlement, after going through bankruptcy and, uh, failed attempt to get a settlement earlier. Uh, there does appear to be a national settlement on this one, and this is Purdue Stacker, was a major manufacturer of opioids. Uh, and they did, like I said, file for bankruptcy, the judge, uh, at the federal level, uh, did not accept the original settlement, so that's why this one's been lagging so far behind the others. Like the past settlements, we need to pass a resolution to accept the settlement agreement, uh, that was, uh, uh, put forward by the attorney representing our county, uh, the generic manufacturer is the same way, only there are a number of smaller companies that, uh, are part of that settlement. Combined both of these, uh, will result in more than, uh, three hundred thousand dollars more coming to Ogumaw County, uh, for opioid settlement, uh, dollars over the next eighteen years. Uh, that puts us up in the, uh, upper ranges of the three million mark on opioid settlement dollars coming to this county. The third one, the state subdivision agreement modifies a current state subdivision agreement, Commissioner Serbuk said in on a Zoom meeting today about this. The only difference between this agreement and the ones in the past most significant to us is that there's now a reporting requirement. So the other settlement agreements didn't necessarily require that, but, um, this is actually a good thing, I think, for accountability. We already go through our annual audit anyway, uh, so we'll have very good data to be able to share, uh, with the state. The other thing that this subdivision agreement does is actually allows us to talk to the Attorney General about this, believe it or not, we weren't allowed to do that before. Or they weren't necessarily obligated to help guide, uh, decisions made at the local level, so that's a good change as well. Otherwise, the state gets a cut of some of these settlements, so that's all written up in there, none of that's changed. Uh, our percentage hasn't changed, uh, but it's primarily for us, I think the, the main point is that annual reporting requirement that will now be required to, uh, comply with, with the state, but like I said, redundancy seems to be the theme tonight. Uh, we've already got all the data together, so reporting is not gonna be a problem.
Well, I see this subdivision thing is sixty-four pages long.
Yeah.
What's been an awful enjoyable podcast or webinar or whatever.
It's bad, actually, so.
All right.
It got summed up in the end with.
Our way through.
Three different questions and basically, somebody asked a question and said, other than the reporting requirements, basically nothing changed, and the representative in the Attorney General's office said, that's correct, and now you can talk to us, those are the two days.
So we jump through the hoops again.
Yep.
Okay. Charlie?
Mm-hmm.
You were on that, you were on that committee, right?
I'm the chairman on the committee, I was, I had meetings all day today, I wasn't able to.
Oh, okay.
Be online like Commissioner Serbuk was.
We didn't really miss anything.
Anything? Okay. Uh, I'm mov- moving right along here. Okay, uh, twenty-six budget review, I see you got a couple of different stuff going on here.
So first, just to remind the board that we did schedule the budget hearing for next Thursday at five-thirty, that, uh, posting did make the paper today, the proposed budget is online for anybody who wants to reference it, and of course, you can always contact me and I can run a hard copy. Because the hearing is next week, does not obligate you to pass the budget next week, we just simply have to have a hearing where the public is allowed to come in and voice any comment they may have about the budget, uh, and that's the night that was chosen. That being said, there's not many changes, uh, left to be made in here. Um, the, the first item here on, on the agenda, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Wiltzy, wanted to talk about the animal control position one more time. Uh, we had a, a discussion a couple of meetings ago about possibly making that a full-time position. I ran the, the data, I mean, the dollars coming in through the millage would definitely, um, support that if that were your choice. Uh, but if we're gonna do that in fiscal year twenty-six, now would be the time to incorporate it in the budget, so, uh, whatever conversation you may want to have on that.
Well, um, I'll start out with, uh, myself, I'm not a big fan of animal control, uh, or the animal question and everything, but I, I just do not, it go, um, we're pulling, we're drafting, uh, explain to me, we're, we're pulling money out of the fund balance to make it a full-time position.
You wouldn't necessarily be doing that with the twenty-six budget, you've got another allocation of revenue coming in. And the way it was structured, it could be, um, made full-time, just using the dollars coming in for twenty-six. But there are dollars that will be in that fund balance category, left over from twenty-five, it's a two-year, uh, mileage. Uh, so if there were anything else that we needed to do, we could pull from that fund balance, it would, it'd be perfectly legitimate to do that. Not obligated to spend at all, you know, don't.
Right.
Get me, uh, think that way, but I just want to assure you that if you did want to do that based on, um, wage scale that was adopted by the board earlier this year, um, the budget, the revenue coming in could support a full-time position if you so desire.
So then hypothetically, or, or factually, uh, when that, when that millage comes to renewal, we'll be able to renew for the same amount. We're not gonna have to hype it.
I, you know, to.
Or should.
What you want the program to look like, um, I would say if you wanted to run the way it is today, be it a full-time or a part-time position, you would not need to increase the mileage to do that.
Okay.
Today.
Today.
Um, next year, who knows what's gonna happen, but.
Charlie?
Um, were you able to see, appreciate Jesse giving the data for us in regards to how many calls that we've received for services, Tim, did you, is the data on here?
It's not on there, it, um, came in yesterday, let me, I'll call it up here.
Can you then also email that to everyone?
I can. See. Three hundred ninety-one animal-related calls so far this year.
Over the last ninety days.
Last ninety days, what's like ninety-one, I thought I saw January in there.
Big difference, that was it.
That was the other one, okay, so the other one, there were nine animal attack calls since the beginning of the year. Uh, differentiated just from the animal calls, and animal attack ends up in a different category in terms of how it's handled. Uh, a lot of times, an animal will need to be quarantined at least, uh, depending on what happens. A three ninety-one in the last ninety days.
Who will report calls per day? Uh, Jesse and, uh, thank you for our current, um, Amber Tawes for being here, would you guys mind coming up there? Yes, please. Yeah, please.
Jesse, from your chair.
There you go.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, you guys, for being here, so, so Jesse, obviously, we know you're the leader of our nine-one-one, and you spend a lot of hours there.
I do.
So go and just base off the data that you sent Tim, which he's gonna now email to the commissioners, we're getting over four calls per day from county residents for animal control issues.
Correct.
Over the last ninety days.
Right, uh, I ran the report from, oh, I ran the report from, yeah, May eighth till August eighteenth. Um, and the report gendered three hundred ninety-one calls, uh, which does add up to about four point four four calls.
Correct.
Um, some days we have none, but there's other days that we have ten, so I mean, but it, on the average, yes, that is what it is, and you guys need to understand that, when we get those calls and they're not taken care of, if animal control is not there and they call back, we're the ones getting yelled at, we're the ones getting screamed at because nobody's doing what we ask them to do. We can't send nobody if we don't have nobody, we can't make an officer do that if they're out on another call, and ninety percent of the time they are. I really have seen an influx in the calls, whether it be a cow in the road, horses in the road, uh, dogs running loose. Um, I, I really do see the need for something to be full-time. That's, that's my outlook on that.
Mark, you have anything?
All right, now, now I wanna be able to look at that data and stuff, so.
Right.
How? I was like you, I didn't wanna raise the price of the wages. They said we had to because it was part-time, but they're not talking about lowering the wages because it's full-time, so I'd like to see it go back out for bits for our time.
Okay. Well, I'm totally surprised by the numbers. We have not got numbers like that, ever, okay? So much of the decisions we, that I make, I depend on reports and numbers. You know, numbers don't come like that, then how do I know?
Right.
I don't have a crystal ball.
Right.
And I'm not gonna call somebody to ask them about numbers because well, because one thing is I expect to see reports come in. And I don't think I have to micromanage everybody to find out, to get reports. I mean, and that's sort of directed to you at all, or even to you, but, you know, you've got department heads, that's where our reports come from, department heads, and if I don't get the reports and I don't get the numbers, I base decisions on, well, I base it on lack of information. I guess this is the best way to say it, this is, this is very revealing today, so. Charlie, anything else?
Uh, appreciate you being here too, um, I know you're leaving here at the end of the month, you know, sad to see you go, um, I probably have had at least a dozen constituents of Ogumaw County tell me how great of a job they've done, they've dealt with you on a, on a call and something, and they did a great job, so thank you for your service and I wish you the best, but.
Thank you.
Um, obviously, you can tell this is an important situation, um, can you give us a little take on, you know, the volume, when you, you know, you've been working for us for how many months now?
Six since March, yeah, about that, about half year.
And twenty-five hours a week.
Yep.
You just can't give us a little take on, on how the job's been and.
Yeah. The, the numbers for the calls, did that include follow-ups?
It did not, it did not include follow-ups, that just.
So the numbers, the number, yeah, just the, the original, so you could probab- you could very easily take that number and triple it. Triple most calls, because when you go, well, I guess it just all depends on what, like what Tim said, it that all depends on what you want your program to look like, if, um, if you want your animal control officer to go take the initial report and just be right by the book, by the law, write people tickets and leave and go on to the next call, you could get away with, you could easily get away with, um, a part-time person. But if you want your animal control officer to take the time to listen to the people on both sides, the complainant and the suspect, for I guess, for better lack of terminology, you're gonna be going back and following up, because taking the original and just being by the book, by the law, you're not gonna solve the problem. Writing people tickets, taking them to jail and, and having them pay all the fines doesn't fix the problem. You have to be able to work with the people, meet them where they're at, and come up with a solution. One example of that is I got a call a couple of weeks ago where this dog got out and it chased, um, a dad and a daughter to their house, and the dad had to hit it with a shovel to stop it from attacking. Right, nobody wants to hear that, nobody wants to go through that experience. So how I handled it is I went to the, the complaint, the, the, the problem, and I talked to her and we made, um, an appointment so I could assess the dog, see its behaviors, see how she had, see how she handled the situation, how she handles her dog. And I spent forty-five minutes educating and coaching her and with the dog to prevent that from happening ever again. Now, I could have wrote her, I could have been, I could have spent way less time, but hopefully, the problem is fixed now, and I haven't had a call since. The other aspect of spending time is setting the animal up for success, for adoption, and setting the shelter up, um, for, for success. So when I bring dogs in, it, it could take up to an hour depending on the dog, so you get the dog out of the truck, nine times out of ten, it can smell all the other dogs, and it takes a little bit to get it in, into the, the yard, and then once you get it into the yard, it gets comfortable, then you go to the inside yard. Once it gets comfortable with that, getting it in the building and into a, into a kennel, depending on the dog, it, it takes time to get that dog comfortable enough to be able to go in, in that type of environment. And if you don't spend that kind of time with the dog, you're setting it up for failure and you're setting the shelter staff up for failure because now they gotta work twice as hard to get the dog socialized and used to them to be able to get the dog in a state where it's ready to be adopted. It's, it's a lot of, there's a lot of science to it. The next animal control officer, you're gonna wanna, you're gonna want that person to really dive into the, the psychology and the science and really, and really stick to what the experts in the fields are, are saying. And I probably shouldn't say this, but that's, I'll get myself into trouble. I put more than twenty-five hours into this program. This, the job in, in Aranac County just fell in my lap. I wasn't even looking for it. It, it came to me. My whole goal, and I told the sheriff and undersheriff this during the interview, my goal was to provide a service that, that this next millage, that it would be a no-brainer that people would want it. The following year, my goal was for people to say, we need this full-time. And you can't build a program on twenty-five hours. There's just no way. I could, I probably spend the first half hour, forty-five minutes just returning phone calls. And if you want your animal control officer to be compassionate and to care about the community, you have to take the time to listen to what people have to say. Because if you don't and you just, you just cut them off and you're like, well, I'm gonna do this and do that. Okay, bye. Again, you're not, you're not providing the service that the community really wants and, and deserves. And a lot, I've had a lot of success with, when I, when I returned the phone call, to my surprise, people are just, I probably won't even have, some folks, I didn't even have to do anything. They were just thankful I returned the phone call, which was just shocking to me. I just figured that was a, why wouldn't you get a return phone call? Then the, the community also appreciates when you go and you, and you work with, with the problem and then you call them back and, and, and let them know, I mean, you can't share everything, but you share with them what you've done, what the game plan is for it to not happen again. So those, those numbers, although they're surprising, it's, you could easily, I mean, I probably could did a little bit more. I mean, I document everything, but I mean, to pull it all together and report that'd take me forever because I I haven't found a process to be able to do that because I only got twenty-five hours, you know? And I'm spending more time taking care of the community. And by building the program, I, I know I've, I've donated. It's, it's almost, it's almost, I've almost made it a full-time position with part-time pay. Or not pay, but part-time hours really, to be honest with you, because that's how much I feel the how important it is to the community and to the animals of this community.
Well, thank you. Thank you a lot. I mean, that really helps me. Okay, well, guys wanted, we'll just, I, I'll just say, Tim, put it on, put the question back up on the next meeting. We can, we can put this, review this ourselves and make a vote.
But the, the next, next week or?
Next week.
Next week, yeah. Next, next regular meeting? I don't think the budget hearing's gonna take that long. Usually it turns faster. While you're sitting here, Jesse, is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
Oh, would you like me to? What would you like to know, Craig?
Whatever you want to tell us.
I don't know, Jess. I mean, a lot of times I just don't know the question, you know, to ask.
And I don't have an answer then.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm just asking you if you got anything to volunteer.
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for coming by.
You're welcome.
Very helpful. And Officer Forsyth, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I really appreciate what you're sharing with us. And let me tell you, I, I'm really gonna already miss you going down Aranac.
So thank you. It was a pleasure.
Reiterate what has already been said here. I've gotten absolutely nothing but positive. Everybody that I have spoken to thinks you did a fantastic job and hate to see, when you got somebody like you and that's all you hear is positive, when you don't hear a negative, especially in a thankless job like animal control. It's like, we hate to lose you. I mean, obviously, you know, you made up your mind, but it's, you know, it's one of those things where you've got that person that you've got the personality and then the, you know, the demeanor to deal with it, make things happen to mostly everybody's satisfaction. I mean, you're taking, you don't get.
Some people that don't.
Well, there's always, no matter what, you're gonna have those, but I mean, you've taken the time and stuff. Again, everybody that I've spoken with, you know, on the public sites as well as professionally speak very highly of you. So best of luck to you in, in Aranac. And if things don't work out, don't forget we're still here.
I will. In the future, I still plan on working side by side with the new animal control officer, any questions that they may have and working collaboratively, actually from the shelter side of it, from being the shelter director side of Aranac. Nicole and I have already had a, a collaborative work experience. We, we got a dog that bit a gentleman in the lip and he had to have reconstructive surgery. The dog ended up biting my hand. I still got a bruise on my thumb. The dog did not do what science tells us, but, but, what should have happened. And so I got, we got him in the kennel and he just was not friendly to anybody. And unfortunately, the, then that's unfortunate. So the, at this shelter, they don't have a guillotine system. So there was no way they could, and we had to quarantine the dog obviously. So they didn't have a guillotine system to separate the dog from them to probably take care of it. The timing was great because we're chock full over there right now. At the time we weren't. And so we, we brought the dog down to Aranac. We have the guillotine system where there's a kennel here and a kennel here. Then there's a, they call it a guillotine. It kinda looks like one and the door shuts. And then I could clean this side of it, open it up, the dog go, that's the way I can shut it and then clean this side. And that's not going away. I will continue to work close, closely with Nicole and, and the animal control program here as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just communicating or IT guy. Commissioner, Commissioner David like to say something. I'm gonna allow it to happen.
Thanks, Commissioner Scott. I just have a couple of questions about the, the millage for the animal control. Tim, did, what's the length of time on that? And that did not specifically state a full-time officer, correct?
It did not specifically state a full-time officer. It was very general in terms of the entire animal control program. So it includes obviously officer, but also any housing of the animals and so on. The millage was for two years. We've collected the first year. We will collect the second year in twenty-six. So that's the foundation of the budget. If we're gonna continue, obviously that millage would have to be renewed or lowered or risen, whatever the board chooses. But that will have to happen next year. You're looking at probably an August or November election. I suppose you could try May, but you know, August and November are the dates that usually, you know, happen to be for the general type millage questions like this.
My, my other question with that is I, I appreciate you guys being there and this information. Obviously, I, I haven't had an opportunity to review yet, but I do attend the meetings at the township level and I don't hear complaints. I hear nothing but positive feedback from our previous two animal control officers now, which is greatly appreciated. But I don't hear any complaints as far as not enough service. If there's any funding left over after collecting those two years, we are able to continue that service until the funding runs out, correct?
Yes.
So I, I, I guess that's, I'm not, at this point in time, I'm, I'm not in favor until I obviously review the data, until I hear some, some complaints from the constituents as far as a full-time officer. You know, hopefully in the future, we can either collect less or, or these services can continue if this millage, you know, doesn't move forward.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thanks for the data, Jesse.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number two, F two, or well, F two is elected non-union official wages. I see we have the same spreadsheet on the iPad.
Yeah, and last discussion, just to refresh everybody's memory, there seemed to be some comfort going to that fifty-fifth percentile column. And for twenty-seven, you know, we talk about this again next year and, and make a decision on, on what you wanna do then. I just handed out the non-union at will employee. And this, this deserves a little bit of explanation. The veteran benefit counselor, animal control officer, our security coordinator, courtroom coordinator, our bailiff, and the transit director, all of those positions have been, and I mean this in the kindest way, but they were all dealt with in terms of setting their wages in what I'll just call the modern era. Couple of others that we have here, the veteran affairs director was actually set up in two thousand eight, equalization director in twenty sixteen, and the information technology director in twenty eighteen. And unfortunately, these are, these are pretty challenging for a couple of reasons. Number one, the last two, the equalization director and the information technology director were hired on a motion of the board, which then tied everything but their wages to the steelworker contract. This is not done for non-union members. It just doesn't work that way. They are, I think it was originally the understanding the equalization director was a quote independent contractor. That's not the case. The motion said this is a position of, for the county, four days a week. There was, I think in both cases, a certain number of time off vacation days that were tied to that, but everything else tied to the steelworker contract. Now, we're working on the non-union employee manual, which will correct that. But those wages, when they were put together, there was just a flat rate and they've increased with all other employees. And it turns out it's pretty much consistent with the steelworkers as well. But any other non-union wages that were given, if it was one percent, two percent, whatever, these positions receive that as well. And that's true with the others that were all adopted by resolution here since twenty twenty-one. The most problematic though is our veterans affairs directors is annual salary thirty-nine thousand nine fifteen fifty-seven cents. That rate is literally just seven hundred fifty dollars more than the four-year rate of the veteran benefit counselor, the position that's a direct report. That's less than two percent difference between the two. And that's probably the lowest number between direct reports and the department head anywhere in the county. That's what I'd like to do a little bit deeper of a dive and take a look at what our neighboring counties are compensating their veteran affairs directors. Now, this is a special fund. It has a pretty healthy fund balance in it. So it's not gonna impact the general fund, but it would be, I think, a good opportunity to bring that position in line with others across the county. Now with all the others being established relatively recent and been subject to any increases that other employees have received, I would just suggest that whatever we decide to do with the elected officials, whatever that average increase happens to be, we would just simply apply that here as well. The exception of the veterans affairs director, I think we need to do, like I said, a little bit more work. But with the equalization director being, you know, four days a week, what works out to like eighty percent time, I guess, whatever that calculation might be, that fifty-four, six, sixty-nine actually seems in line. And with the IT director, well, it depends on if the system has crashed today or not, as to whether or not that's enough money to pay. I, I, you know, again, it, it looks just in terms of the rest of the scales across the county, it does appear to be in line, but like every other position, I mean, just the one and two percent increases in the last year, that lump sum is, is the only increase that that's received as well. And that's probably one that is more sensitive to market demand than most of our others, meaning you know, another county, if they were paying, you know, considerably more, obviously, that, that might be a hazard for us. There aren't many other counties that have an IT director. A lot of the counties are, have contracted that out. I'm absolutely not advocating that here. The, the attention that we receive in this, just this week, converting all of our, moving all of our data between servers for the BSNA, which is probably the biggest data set that we have, very smoothly. You know, it's very worthwhile having that position in-house and having somebody on call that can meet on demand. As systems malfunction as they do from time to time is very handy. And I can tell you more than one time that we've had somebody come down in a bit of a panic because one of the core systems is out during court. Obviously not a good thing. Tom is able to get right in there and fix it. So all that being said, I would like to take a deeper dive though on the veteran affair director and find out where we are in terms of marketing, but would just simply suggest whatever that average increase, if any, that's done with the electeds that we apply that here as well.
Let me ask about a few years ago, transit director. A few years ago, when Ray was there, the mechanic was making more money than, than Ray was. And I, I pushed to put his salary over, over that and he, and he didn't want it. I couldn't believe that. How can you turn it down? But are we, are we better off now? With this base rate, can't, this, this base entry rate here has gotta be pretty darn close to what that mechanic makes. He's on hourly, yeah.
On the top of the scale, I guess.
Well, he is at the top. Right. And we know that he's not going to be by the end of the year, but because retirement, but but the scale still, scale still stays there.
Are they on thirty-five?
They are forties.
Are they forty? I was gonna say, I, because I was gonna submitted that one for Ray. So it's in here. We got it right there.
Yeah, right now the mechanic top rate. And right now, under that contract top rate after twenty years, that works out to fifty-four thousand six forty-one. So yes, when it's topped out, it is more than what the director is coming and say at an entry level.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I, I, I agree with you on the veterans benefit counselor and director, absolutely. Yeah, and that is a totally standalone budget, so with a healthy fund balance, so. Yeah, go ahead.
So is this kind of the temperature then of us? Are, are you guys thinking that fifty, fifty-fifth percentile is kinda where you guys are at or? Tim, when we first started talking about this, I know you made some recommendations of where you thought you should be at. What was, what was that again?
It's recall that I don't have a vote in it. Clear. But my standard is seventy-fifth percentile to remain competitive in our market. And recall, the market in this case is counties of comparable size and breaking them down, roughly sixteen counties comparing it to. And that's where the seventy-fifth percentile landed. And I personally feel pretty strongly about that. But also understanding really any of these percentiles that you see here, I think would, would certainly be you know, defendable without, without question. Again, I'm just falling on that seventy-fifth. If the board is more comfortable with the fifty-fifth, you see what the numbers are here. I was pretty surprised in, in some cases as to where we felt compared to those other counties. And it, it was not favorable. All right. I'll say that. But I do feel that any of these would at least put us in an area that we could say we're at least competitive in terms of what our compensation is.
And then just one more time, the seventy-fifth percentile though puts us right competitive right there.
It, it, yes. Yes. Better than, well, yeah, better than fifty percent. Okay. So it kinda puts us right in the middle of that upper tier.
Some reason I thought you, you had suggested fifty-five, but.
And that's the amount of conversation uh, with comfort level commissioners the last time we discussed it.
Well, the difference even between fifty-five and seventy-five is really not that.
Not a huge though.
Not a huge difference. I'm not ready for a vote on, I'm not ready to vote on this next week. We got time and I, I really like to get, I really like to get into negotiations with the, with the unions before I before I make a decision on this.
Tim, didn't you initially talk about like doing a two-year phase in, so we didn't need to do it all at once. We could do like a phased.
Right. So as you'll see on the chart that's there, and let's just use the, the fifty-fifth again, since that's where we've been. You've got a fiscal year twenty-six and a fiscal year twenty-seven. It would be at the end, it would be in the fiscal year twenty-seven budget that we meet that fifty-fifth percentile goal. All right. So this is a, instead of trying to take one big bite at that apple, we get two bites at it. Half in twenty-six, the other half in twenty-seven.
That's what I thought this was represented, but I just wanted to make sure that that's where we're still.
Roger, you got anything to say?
Last year, where we were at the county, we were pretty low, weren't we?
Yeah.
We were like bottom or the next one up.
For fun, Alan? Yeah, well, for, for just about every category, when it comes to overall fiscal health, we were at the bottom.
That's what I thought. But I don't want to be there again.
Yeah, we are on our way up.
I know. I just don't want to run. Walk.
Yeah.
Darling, I mean, I wish may you just said there, um. Yet also, we got also keep in mind too, there's been a lot of employees and a lot of stakeholders here that have held on and I feel, you know, I've continued to work really hard and haven't seen um, much of a pay increase. So I, I do understand completely. I say it all the time, you know, I say that at our budget committee meetings. Hey, we've made some really great moves these last three years, you know, we're finally getting some sustainability for the county. And we're looking possibly at the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-six with a one point four million dollar fund balance. But still, we've got to be smart. We've got to stay united. We can't, you know, can't overextend ourselves. So um, I, I do understand what you're saying there, but we do have a lot of really hardworking knowledgeable people here that deserve a, a raise and for years and years they didn't get much. So I, I, I'm still kind of a little in, in limbo myself.
I think we'll bring it up to the committee, to the next committee at home. That's where I'm at. I'm not ready taking action yet, even on the, even on the non, if, if they have will. Not yet. Okay with that?
I'm fine with, yeah. I, I think we need to do something, but you know.
But yeah, we need to. Okay. Anything other on the budget review? Did you want to go over those uh, new changes for twenty-six?
Um, you have a one page on there that as I promised I would do, if there are any changes to these drafts, I would summarize them for you and they all fit on this one page. So based on the last conversations that we've had and with uh, uh, the final millage calculations I received from the equalization office, there've been some changes. The millages, um, unfortunately, as we've experienced every year, we're subject to rollbacks. So every, every one of those millages was rolled back a little bit. And you can see the um, um, impact that that's had on the particularly, uh, let's just pick right in the middle of that is the road patrol millage revenue. Actually dropped that revenue by about fifteen thousand uh, based on that rollback number. So, you know, all those adjustments have been made. They're, they're relatively small. Uh, we talked the last meeting about the possibility of using commissary fund to replace one of those transport vans. So I've taken the liberty of actually writing that into that, that special fund budget so that that dollar is reserved in there. It does require use of fund balance to do that, uh, because we're just not collecting as much. I are anticipating to collect as much, but there is uh, right now over two hundred thousand in that fund balance. We just put a flat number in there at a hundred thousand. I don't think the undershirts had opportunity yet to really dive into uh, what some of those van prices are right now. I just took maybe about five minutes and kind of went around the internet just to see, you know, that's more than enough to cover a van. But that's just the van. I don't know what special equipment needs to be in there for the jail. So I know the sheriff will be able, the sheriff and undersheriff will be able to take a look at that uh, to make sure that all those uh, accessory costs are included. You have a cage in there, you'll have radios, you'll have all that. I think that'll be enough to do it. If not, we'll be revisiting it, uh, and make sure that there is enough. Um, yeah, the right to these pretty well speak for themselves. Um, there are a couple of special funds in there that were new this year and the one that comes right to mind, there's a new veterans memorial fund uh, that the auditors had established at the end of the audit. Uh, and there are utilities being charged to that. I don't know if it's a light on a flag. I'm not sure what it is. Uh, but that needed revenue to pay for that. So in that case, uh, taking your transfer from the veterans office fund to the veterans memorial fund. Why did we do that? Well, it was that veterans office fund that was paying for that up until this new fund was set up. So it just makes sense to bring those funds over with the expense. Um, but you can, you can see there was a friend of the court, we talked about the juvenile officer and the court administrator. Uh, so those numbers were adjusted, the uh, fund balance for secondary road, we, as the undersheriff reported and we passed a resolution, I believe at the last meeting to accept that grant. The grant was considerably less than this year, but we knew that was going to happen. Uh, but we didn't have a program that way in the budget. So there's a higher use of fund balance in the uh, secondary roads, I'm sorry, in the uh, road patrol millage fund coming over to the general fund to uh, equal or to make the a hundred percent of the costs uh, for that secondary road program. Uh, otherwise, uh, like I said, the rest of these are relatively small, um, actually increased. It says MSU animal control revenue. That's just um, miss in there. The two seventy-three is just the MSU uh, revenue. Uh, and there was an increase that was uh, projected in there and the animal control revenue as well. So it's kind of mixed up the two wordings there. I'll fix that. Get that out to you so we're not confusing MSU and animal control. As these happen, I don't anticipate many more, but as.
Mister David, did you have something you'd like to share or ask?
Um, I, the secondary road patrol, I think there was a forty-two thousand dollar. Can you explain that please?
Yeah, that was the one with the uh, grant amount that was put in the original recommended budget was greater than ninety thousand uh, that we had for this year. We plugged in and then we got the word from the state that that was, I forget exactly what the number was, but it was reduced uh, quite a bit. So that's what that is. It's taking, uh, we're already using some of the uh, road patrol millage fund to cover the balance of what the grant didn't cover. And when the grant dollars uh, were uh, reduced, well, we have to make that up somewhere and that came from the road patrol millage to the general fund. So that's the three fifteen, the one oh one, three fifteen in the general fund. You might recall last year, I wanted to put all that into the road patrol millage fund. Uh, the treasurer pointed out that's not allowed. We just put it back in the general fund and we'll fund it this way then.
I think, uh, I think that grant was in the mid-sixties or something that came in.
Right. For this year?
For this, for twenty-six.
Yeah, sixties some.
I don't like that. Anything else, Commissioner?
Um, I, I did just, uh, I, I raised my hand previously, uh, related to the uh, wage increases. Um, I'm going to agree with you guys as far as not making a decision quite yet. We bet in some financial strain. I appreciate everybody's patience. I, I'm looking at the fifty-five percentile as far as uh, department heads and elected officials. Um, and I think we really need to look at those non-union employees, especially IT equalization. Um, uh, the veterans as well. Uh, we definitely need to um, to look at uh, their increases this year.
Uh, I, yeah, to go back onto that, I might be in favor of a certain per- percentile in, in, in the first year and the se- another percentile in the second year. I may not even use, use these recommended numbers, I mean, I might be looking at something else. But I'm just kind of looking.
Right. I, I agree. We're, we're finally headed in the right direction. We definitely don't want to spend what we currently had. I mean, where we're at, but we, we got to, to show these employees that we're very appreciative of other patients, um, and that we're able to keep them. But we got to be smart too. We got to make good decisions.
Great. Okay. Anything else on uh, on the budget adjustments and?
I'm just one, one other thing. Commissioner Sherbrooke had brought up at a prior meeting, the allocation to the uh, child assessment center or that's, that's the right word that uh, he had suggested that that number be increased from five thousand to ten thousand. That's in the nine oh one activity. Uh, just an allocation that we do each year and uh, we never did bring that to resolution. So we just didn't want to lose track of it. I kept that in my notes.
Well, okay. I've kept that in mind too and I, I'm, I tend to, well, one of the things about the spreadsheet about the uh, budget adjustments was I think the first two friend of court and and what, what's the other?
Probate?
Probate. You know, we have, one of those funds has the big fund balance of four fifty. You know, and I mean, I, I've been thinking about this since we talked about that and I don't know that we can't hang around that number four hundred and just help help the general, help the, help the general outlook of everything. And then by doing an adjustment like that, that's still giving us a good backdrop uh, in case of, and then we could, we could up a couple of other uh, smaller things like the assessment center and maybe like sting. You know, of course they'd have to come and talk to us before I'm going to vote for anymore, but that's, that's easy enough. So.
We're not the only ones that haven't heard anything from Stan.
Yeah, all.
I hear that from the townships saying they are.
Me too, me too. I do too. So, okay, back to the agenda here. Um, okay, we're, we're other. Anybody got other?
No.
Okay, uh, commissioner comments? You may want to comment on anything? Rod?
Nope.
No? Okay. All right, um. Okay. And then uh, public comment on uh, on anything. Sir, come on up here.
Please.
State your name, state your name and uh, you, you can sit down if you'd like.
Well, it's going to be brief. I think your optics will not go over well with the citizens of Bogomel County. After a couple of years ago, we were talking about going into receivership because we didn't have enough money to pay our bills. And two short years later, a year and a half later, you're talking about giving everybody raises. I appreciate that. I've, I've worked many years at my job being told, just hold out, hold out, hold out. We did. But the optics of you giving raises, and I don't know how big you're talking about, but it's not going to go over well with the, the community at large right now. I can see giving bonuses and maybe small raises, but you're talking about really increasing people's um, wages. I, I just don't think it's going to go over well.
Thank you.
Just my opinion.
You remember Sam?
Ken Schneffler.
Oh, Sam, you got it. Okay. I just want to make sure she got it down. Okay. Any other public comment? On anything? Sir, come on up. Go ahead.
Ucas Mills Township.
Yeah.
I'm here on behalf of the animal resource position. I am so sorry we're losing Robert Forsythe. He's been an absolute asset to the community and representing just one municipality, Mills Township. He and I have worked very well together to alleviate and, and rectify some problems we've had in that arena. I would pretty, he would, I would call him, he would tell me what he needed. I would do a little legwork for him to save him some time, provide that to him. He would go out and deal with the folks because at, at the township level, I don't have the authority or the ordinance to address some of these issues, whereas the county does. But I would try and provide him with some, I had no idea he had that many calls. So I could tell you, I'm not sure the dealings he and I have had are reflected in those numbers, but he's been stellar and he's prompt and he's he's got the philosophical approach and the demeanor to handle this stuff. And since we've got the millage, I would, I would love to see this position be full-time because quite frankly, that's cheaper than sending a, a police officer out there to deal with this stuff. I think that would be a, a, an added benefit. And the millage would cover that as I understand it. And I understand the optics you're dealing with. I mean, you're trying to fund a twenty-four, seven road patrol. We have a millage for that. I think the SROs are covered primarily by the school systems, the two school systems involved. And I can only imagine knowing how busy Robert was in my township. What he had to deal with and what I think seventeen municipalities in Ogumal County. So I think full-time would be frankly, that, that may not be enough, but it would, I think it would, there would be some hidden benefits with regard to him dealing with problems, someone like Robert, you have to get the right person for the forty-hour position. But it would, it would relieve some of the load on the sheriff's department and frankly, the nine-one-one operators as well. Because people are calling me and then I'm calling Robert and I don't think that's reflected in the numbers. But you know, that, that's my take on that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on the phone would like to make public comment on anything? Going once, twice, redone? All right. I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to consider strategy connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreement. M C L one five point two six eight C.
Second.
Got support? I need a roll call vote, please.
Roger Mahew.
Yep.
Mark Sherbrooke.
Yeah.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Charles Volte.
Yes.
Okay, um, Tom, would you let the commissioner stay on the line?
Commissioner Scott, there will be nothing after this.
I believe there won't be any, well, there could, oh yeah. You haven't talked about. It's like right, so don't call the Lansing yet.
All right. All right, calling.
Oh, we got an ongoing thing. Um, Tom and I about open meetings act and what you can do about being on Zoom during the meeting. Or us being on the meeting. He, he won't let us on, he won't, he would not let Jenny on or Mark on.
Um, you're back open, ready to come into open session.
All right. I'll make a motion. We'll.
We don't need to do that.
Oh, we don't.
We were just informed that we don't need.
By the county clerk.
All right.
She had recent training. They said that was not necessary.
That was a redundant.
All right, Rogers, your turn.
The information.
Vote for your.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Tom. Thanks, Dan. See you in the morning.